Everybody ready?
Go like this. Stop beating, stay up and be quiet.
Call the order of the regular common council meeting, Monday, November 20th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Frye? McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson? Here. Wellnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Here.
All the person Frye is excused tonight, and we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Matthew.
Oh, okay.
Everybody gets ready out there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matthew.
Hey. That's a cool name.
Confirmation or appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, November 17th. Agendas posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Council acceptance of the agenda?
Motion to accept.
Second. Oops, go ahead, Paul. Davis and Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is a public hearing to hear comments regarding the 2018 proposed budget document. We can open that right up, can't we? Nothing.
Correct.
And we'll officially open up the public hearing. If there is anyone that wishes to speak on the budget, please state your name and address, and we will pass you a microphone if you have something you want to say. Okay, there's no one who wants to speak on the public hearing for the budget?
Our budget.
Our city budget for the, for next year, all the expenses of running the city. Is there copies of, is there copies of them left out there yet? Maybe one or two of them could use them.
Can we comment a little bit?
Sure.
The budget, you know, keeps the roads in good shape around town, the parks in the cemetery mode, the sidewalks in good shape, and keep the staff that runs the city, administration of city hall and all the department heads, makes everything tick with the police department, make sure we have adequate funding for our police department, all our department heads and city hall, and that's what makes our house we live in, our city. That's what this budget's about.
Thank you.
What do you want us to spend money today? May I ask you where it's at?
What's it? Oh, there's a staff report. It was a police staff report.
Okay, if no one wants to ask any questions on the budget, we will officially close the public hearing, and then we'll open it up to personal appearances for non-agenda items, if there was anyone that wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from November 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next item is to consider the approval of the November 7th joint council and RDA minutes. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Any corrections or additions on that one? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Committee reports, finance, Mark.
Make a motion to approve a pay request number two from J.B. Johnson Brothers LLC for the 2017 sidewalk project in the amount of $63,032.50.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes. Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve pay request number one from Nelson Escavating and Son LLC for Rowland Street storm sewer repair, in the amount of $24,686.70.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the bills and payroll in the amount of $240,598.37.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes. Motion passes.
There are no licenses, so we'll move on to five. Motion to approve a public event packet for Home for the Holidays in way of the fees.
Second. Any discussion?
That's this Saturday, everyone.
Anybody tall enough to wear the root bear costume out there?
You guys can fight over it.
Let's see, no further discussion, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Boyer for finance.
Thank you. Anything from utilities? We met Monday, on the 13th, and we just went over some of the waste treatment plants and pay requests for minor construction and some odds and ends. Thank you. Public Works?
Public Works met last week. We had discussions in ordinance amendments on the brush pickup as well as the sidewalk. Future agenda items, basically going to be discussing next week, the parking around the cornerstone, see if we get that figured out and stuff. And then item two here, draw your attention to the ordinance as we have approved, or we did approve of that meeting, for the brush pickup, it's on page nine, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the City of Edgerton Ordinance, 1712, amend section 18.175b, the brush pickup.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, this looks nice. Nice work, you guys. My only question is, will the, the pieces of information that are left with the houses that brush is not picked up, is that going to be reviewed and changed to in accordance of this?
We actually left the communication of the ordinance and that, kind of put that off because we're considering a couple different options, one of them possibly being a letter or whatever, but that's, that's the main challenge I had, is to not only have this in place, but to, especially come springtime when it's a lot closer, get it so people, how are we gonna best communicate that so people understand what they can and can't do?
Good.
That's gonna be a few meetings probably down the road, but we'll get that figured out.
Good, that was my biggest concern. I like-
I do, I mean, it's, I'm not really sure, so.
I think that's where you get the most calls, it's not about the ordinance, right? Because most people don't really know and understand it. I like the armful piles, I like-
Yeah.
-that wording.
I mean, if you'll notice, a lot of this stems from that meeting we had a few months ago, where actually, all six of us were in attendance, which I think was excellence.
Good.
So, I don't know if we all agreed necessarily that night, but this is basically what we thought was reasonable, it's not the amount of brush you can put out, but how it's, how it's there-
Right.
...so that the worker can, you know, best get it there. You can put out as much as you want, but it's gonna require a little, little maintenance and a little help on the homeowner's side, so.
Thank you, Paul and Tom Hartzell, for working on this. I would've made the meeting-
We had a good meeting last week, so.
What's that?
Yes.
I would've made the meeting, we had another meeting we had to go to.
That's fine, so.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, motion to second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, and then I would also draw your attention to the sidewalk ordinance, we did a little, a little bit of a change on that, basically trying to define what we're gonna be required to have fixed, we discussed cracks going from seam to seam or edge to edge, whatever you wanna prefer, and how much basically was missing, or, what was that word again we used?
Spalding?
Spalding within the, within the crack. Also, the, the upheave or whatever, the difference between one square to another was at a half an inch, staff had requested that we consider in full inch, and we sort of compromised, and at this point, we thought three quarters of an inch would require some type of repair. We also discussed maybe squares that were actually in and amongst a lot of other squares that probably wouldn't have any further damage to them, being supported by the other squares, but.
If I could just make one clarification, the current ordinance is an, is an inch, and the draft ordinance went to the committee was a half an inch, and the committee's recommending to you three quarters.
Yes.
So, you know, kind of, and I know, I don't know if, Tom, you wanna make some comments about that, or some more thoughts about it?
Yeah, with checking with Lacy who takes care of the insurance, we had, didn't have a claim at three quarters of an inch, so I think we should revisit that and maybe take it to a half.
You mean, take it to an inch?
No.
Oh.
No, half, half inch.
Oh, right, right, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I think I actually said it backwards, but yeah, they, yeah, okay. So basically, what Tom is saying, that we should go down to, you're required to fix it if you have a half an inch difference, instead of a three quarters inch. I think when I originally explained it, I had it backwards, but.
Okay, so, two questions then, if that needs to be revisited, do we, do we vote on this tonight, or do you wait and bring it back to us?
When you say revisit, you want the committee to revisit it, or you want the council to consider a half an inch versus three quarters?
Um, well, we didn't have a full committee, we just had two members, we agreed that we weren't probably going to be able to come to the conclusion to go down to a half an inch. So the, the three quarters inch was a bit, basically a compromise between Elder and Olson and myself, not even, not even that, really, we're just trying to get some more direction from the council as to how we wanna do that, but for sake of getting it here and getting it before you, we had actually voted for the three quarters inch.
Oh, I get that, but if Tom is saying that we should go, you should revisit that again.
I understand.
What are our options? Either it goes back to the committee, or we say no, or, and we vote on this, or the council has the option to negate the three quarter inch and say go to a half inch?
All the people's are all on.
I think we're here now, I think we're here now, and I don't know that if we go back to the committee.
It would change things.
And I mean, basically what we're doing, what we're at this point, as far as I know, unless anybody else has any other objections or questions, we are now here to decide whether we want the half inch or the three quarters inch. That, I don't wanna go back to the committee for that.
Okay.
I think we're here now with this.
So by the three quarter inch and half, you're saying if one slab is a half an inch higher than the other, and it used to be an inch?
Yes.
And if we went three, you were suggesting three quarters, but you said we do have a claim on one that's at the three quarter level?
Yes, I'm suggesting half, and that's what I suggested to the committee.
What happens if there was a half an inch, if this person, could they still make a claim on a half inch? So, okay, they could.
Any, any faults, I'm gonna make a claim right now.
Sure.
But if it was a half inch, they may not have tripped versus a three quarter.
Okay. I don't know.
Some of the conversation, I think, at the committee level we had was, you know, how, how many sidewalk squares are going to have to be replaced? Some of the conversations that Tom and I have are, what is the best prescription for a relatively minor step? Is it a full replacement, or if, or is it a saw cutting? And so we don't do saw cutting as a city, so a property owner could do that, but I think that's part of the debate, or the conversation that you should have, is if it's a minor infraction, is, is tearing it out and putting something new in its place the best prescription for that problem? So, and it's a matter of opinion as to, you know, there isn't a right and we're wrong, but Tom is concerned that three quarters of an inch step is a significant enough change in elevation that it is a trip hazard.
Oh, no.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mayor has correctly noted that we yet, have yet to move this. You have not made a motion.
How much did you introduce?
Yeah, we should, if we're having a significant discussion, we really ought to have it on the table to discuss it, so.
So I should make the motion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the City of Edgerton Ordinance 17-13, amend section 4.118, sidewalk new construction, reconstruction, which at this point does say three quarters of an inch.
I'll second that.
Okay, now we can continue the discussion.
Now, do we have any discussion?
So from a, from a committee perspective, why don't you guys weigh in a little bit more?
Well, one thing that Paul suggested in the committee level was that a half an inch, there's gonna be a lot of that, and that may become very costly to a homeowner, that really a half an inch difference isn't very much.
So, Tom, right now, it, right now it's an inch? So I know that you have been checking sidewalks, so would any of those that you have checked, with this change to three quarters of an inch, would you have to go back? Do you have to go back and revisit those?
Yes.
Okay.
We were actually, because how this happened was, there's a kind of a discrepancy in the current ordinance, where it talked about one inch, and then part of it down, it talked about a half.
Okay.
So, in the past, we didn't really have a gauge, we just kind of looked at them and marked them and put them in the program.
Mm-hmm.
For this here, I actually measured each square or difference, and we were marking them at half an inch.
Maybe it's good to start with a three quarter and see what that does, you know, I mean, moving from an inch to a half might be, you're right, quite a bit of a difference for a lot of people, I don't know.
Is there anyone on the council that wants to pursue the half inch?
Not necessarily me.
I'm sorry, Chris, what?
Do you wanna make it the half inch, or do you wanna, if somebody wants to make that, make a, make a motion to amend?
Yeah, I, I would like to kind of take the direction from the committee, that committee, unless I felt really strongly about something, then I'd probably make an amendment, but you guys are the ones that were, been working on it.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, to a point, but we're still, everybody probably has their mind, I mean, whether they think a half an inch or three quarters of an inch is appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think you need more from the committee to-
No.
-help you make that mine up.
Well, I, I agree, I mean, if I felt really strongly about it, that'd be one thing. I don't feel strongly about it one way or another, so I would then take a recommendation from the committee that worked on it, is what I'm saying. So if the committee is suggesting three quarters, I'd go with that.
Okay. Tom?
Today morning, myself had a discussion also about really doing the whole program. I'm, because I'm, this is my first year going through this, well, last year, but first year marking, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why we are lowering our standards of our sidewalks. When contractors put them in, they get them nice and flat, no defects, but as I go around and look at them, I have to determine, according to our ordinance, how, how they should be marking them. And I think that instead of marking them here or just to get by, we should be up here making them as close to perfect as we can, because I'm looking at it as a, looking at them now, in their current condition, not knowing what they're gonna do when it's, when it has frost in the ground, and if it has old moisture, and it becomes a slippery spot with ice, or a trip and a slip, you know, so I think we should be more restrictive than what we have been currently.
And I kinda agree with Tom, by going to a half inch hour of creating more sidewalks that have to be replaced, which is paid for by the homeowner, but still the liability of them, issues fall on the city, so I, I think either way, it's, we're the one-
Clarify that, though.
We don't necessarily assume any liability as a result of this. You're going to potentially have more slip falls, but that doesn't translate into liability for the city.
Then we have a claim on one that went to the city?
People sue us for a lot of things, just because make, I'm not saying that lightly, but it's true that there are claims filed regularly, and many of them are denied. So, yes, we wanna have good sidewalks and safe sidewalks, but it doesn't necessarily, as Bill said, result in the city's liability.
There's governmental immunity for most types of causes of action. The one that wouldn't be, would be ministerial duties, if there is a hard and fast rule that is, is universal, if the National Sidewalk Safety Association established a standard that said you cannot have, cannot have more than five, you know, half an inch, arguably one could, there is no such association.
Right.
But in this case, if we were to allow violations, presumably, of our own ordinance, and we knew about it and we allowed it, then the liability could attach, but by lowering it doesn't increase or decrease our amount of liability, if you follow.
By lowering it to a half inch, then you're saying that if, if we let one slide that's three quarter, then that's really-
Potentially could be actually the reverse, yes, potentially.
All right.
I guess my feeling is, and Tom's, I mean, theoretically right, we should be striving to get them as flat as possible, but we're also practically, in the practical side, this is going to increase the amount of sidewalks that have to be fixed, probably a good amount of, a good amount of more that's gonna have to be fixed, which is just gonna incur a lot of costs, a lot of work, inspecting, I mean, I don't know, I mean, one thing I know about concrete is that it moves.
Mm-hmm.
And it's always going to move, and, so we're never going to, to get that flat sidewalk city that we would all love to have, and I guess it's just up to everybody if they decide that three quarters of an inch is appropriate, or a half an inch is appropriate, but we are going to have more of what we had this spring backlash, or cost to the customers, whatever you want to prioritize, or whatever you wanna think about it, there'll be more of that with a half an inch, and I'm not saying that that's not appropriate, I'm just saying that's something we should consider.
Another item that we considered in the meeting was whether we would determine, I mean, we think that something may happen down the line to a sidewalk, if it's got a little bit of a crack in it, but we don't know when or if that's gonna happen for sure, and so we decided to, you know, quit being preemptive and just to go with fixing what's there now that needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
That we think and believe needs to be fixed.
But for, for the cracks?
Yes.
But, I mean, I can, you know, I was all in favor of lowering it from an inch, which I thought was a lot, but after that, now you have to decide whether you, and if someone wants to amend, motion more than happy to have that happen, but just, what do you think, three quarters of an inch or half an inch? And that's kind of where we're, each one of us is at right now, I guess.
If no one wants to make amendment to make it a half inch, we will go to vote on the way it's proposed here. No, no half inches? Any other discussion besides the depth? Hearing none, roll call.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Looks like everything you had over there, Paul, that's all you had from Public Works, then?
Right now, yeah, that's it.
Fire District?
Okay, Fire District had their meeting the second Tuesday of last month, or this month, excuse me, we're still in November, aren't we? Couple things to report, the board approved the budget for the Fire District. In addition, all of the municipalities have signed the, the agreement or the resolution for the CPI plus two. Since we have a lot of young Boy Scouts in the audience, I don't know if all of you know who our fire chief is, but he happens to be here today, tonight, so our fire chief, Randy Pickering, so you have an opportunity to meet him, and I would personally like to thank Randy for all of his work that he has done this year with the fire department. You've done an excellent job, and I thank you very much. That's all I have from the Fire District.
Thank you. Couple typos on the next line, hopefully we can still continue with this, but it's consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 19-17, adoption of 2018 annual budget document, and establish the 2017 tax levy.
I'll make a motion to do so.
That sound right?
From last year.
Happy face.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to do so.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do, there was some really good discussions it was this year, and it, as usually is over the years, and what I liked about the budget too, is that we have in it to take care of Chaucer Street. We usually do one street a year, big streets like Blaine Street we did last year, but Chaucer Streets is like a side street, but we're even tacking on even smaller streets, which is, I think is very good, and we're gonna try to get the money proposed in the budget, but eighty grand to help alleviate, if you guys all know, if you drive down 51 by the, the old Shoe Factory, Quick Trip, it always floods when it rains hard, we're gonna try to do a little bit better with engineering, and staff came up with a, to put some money in the budget to take care of that flooding issue down there, if you ever drive by it through with your parents or something when it rains. So there's some really good things in this budget for the department heads and so far for the city, and, you know, everybody was really, really good, you know, all the council members and staff, department heads and so forth, and no one got everything that they wanted, I see, but hopefully we'll still address the, for the chief and the police station for the, the equipment he needs to make sure the power stays on, and lawnmower for the cemetery, and there's just a lot of things in here, folks, that makes our house, our city run and tick, and everybody did a good job, I, I thank everyone.
I know, yeah.
I know, one thing with the ballistic vests from the police department, I think the price went up on them since we talked about it.
Uh-oh.
And I have had one hundred dollar contribution from Kirsten there for my matching buying of the other vests, so.
I have agreed to contribute too, so I will write a check this evening.
Well, we have to get it, sometime before the vests are ordered, does that work, or would you order them and have to pay for them as long? Or we order them and have to pay for them as long?
They won't be ordered until January.
Okay.
Okay, we can get through the holidays.
Okay. Do a good job of getting them, getting that price down there.
Can you go on Black Friday, see if you can get a deal? Or Cyber Monday or?
Discount the vest, right?
Yeah, yeah. We, as Matt McIntyre said, we had some cutting in the budget to do and that was one of the things that we thought we could help was if we all kind of pitched in and helped to contribute, purchase the ballistic vest for the Police Department.
How much did it cost?
We were told $5.50 but each, but.
And they, you need two.
And you were at, what, between seven and eight hundred now or are you just, are you just giving me a hard time?
You're giving me a hard time.
Oh, good.
Okay, still checking out on Black Friday.
I offered to buy one, challenging the rest of the council and anybody else that wanted to get into this to purchase the other, other one, so.
The home mayor is buying the same vest that we've been doing for years as long as we may.
Okay. Well, thanks. We don't have to go to Wausau to get them, do we? Okay, is there a motion to second on adopting the budget? Is there any, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, that project's done for another three months. Next item is to consider lifting hiring freeze for police officer position.
You look for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that a motion to lift the hiring freeze for the police officer position.
I'll second it.
It, and I think it would be good to have some background on it. Or is everybody aware? Do you know why you're making that motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, no, I think Chief should.
Unfortunately, one of our officers has resigned. He's over on the list. He just called it life changes and he's unfortunately left and we need to fill that spot in the city model as we were before he was hired.
And that's too bad. He was a good officer.
I second that too, exactly.
Very good. And I think the other thing is, the reason why it's on here like this instead of under personnel is we did not call a certain or a special personnel committee meeting. We didn't have the time. We felt that it was most important to not go through the personnel committee and come directly to council to save Chief some time, so.
And speaking of saving time, can you still go off the list you had or do you have to go through the whole process again?
Whole process. That was, our list is expired and he was hired off that final list.
That's a thought. Okay. Okay, motion to second to hire, or lift the hiring freeze. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mayor, all the persons and staff reports. Well, Thanksgiving coming up this week, the outreach dinner up at St. John's Church. If anybody wants to have lunch or come up and help serve and make up the boxes to go, that's Thursday morning, Thanksgiving morning. Can't tell you a time because whenever I get there is when I start, so. We have the Home for the Holidays coming up Saturday and I'd like to thank everyone that has donated time and money for all the activities that are going on this weekend and hopefully continue in the future, but we have a couple of people here that have spent a lot of time putting up lights and decorations and I'd like to thank them. And the parade is at six, so see if anybody can fit into the root bear costume. We still need that film. We're working on it, but.
There's a guy laughing says he's, he wants to.
You mean that ain't a real bear?
Oh, you guys, Mark, we've had Mark believe in that all these years.
Other than that, happy Thanksgiving and see y'all Saturday sometime.
How about a special council meeting?
Discuss the special council meeting for, yeah, yes. Couple items and December 12th or 13th we're being discussed and I know there's issues with the 12th for sure with 13th. Does anybody have a problem with that?
What night is that on?
The Wednesday. And Fire District's the next day.
Yeah, okay, I think that's fine with me.
Is it good with everybody here?
What, what time are you looking at?
Can we start at six?
Paul's schedule's probably the one that's most.
6:30 is fine on a Wednesday.
6:30 Wednesday of 13th?
Sure.
Sure.
What's planned on it?
Good.
I just want to also, all the persons report, thank you for coming down to the city council meeting to listen in of the city government, how we talk about issues and how it does affect all of us and so forth. And you're young, maybe once you get a little older, maybe be running for things, be involved in the community like you are now to make our, our lives better and that's what the meaning of Thanksgiving is, and give us thanks for what we've got.
And yes, thank you for being here and if you have any questions that you want to ask after we shut down, that would be fine too, so we could have, everybody stick around so you can ask them some questions. We've got the chief, city clerk, librarian, public works director, utility director, administrator and attorney, so all kinds of different angles. Fire chief over here.
Fire chief and the police chief and the mayor and the lawyer.
I'll make a motion to adjourn if anyone has anything else.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?